It looks like Bobby Lindsey is with us now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, folks, we are live on our in-house channel. You may begin.
Good evening and welcome to the first of our candidate forums for the 2021 election season. We've been conducting these popular candidate forums for many years at Horizon House, but one important aspect changed a year ago. For the first time, we held virtual forums because of the pandemic. And here we are, here later, and we're still virtual. But we hope that we'll get back to Anderson Hall for our fall series of forums prior to the November general election. My name is Neil McRiddles, along with Laura Wees, co-chair of the Election Forums Committee. To help you prepare to vote in the important city, county, and special district elections this year, the Election Forums Committee will present a series of forums and key races and ballot issues, presenting three forums starting tonight, prior to the general election, August 3rd, and more forums and candidates ballot issues in early fall prior to the November general election. This evening, we'll be focusing on the election of two positions of the Seattle City Council. These positions, the only ones of the council which are elected citywide. The other seven members of the council are elected by district. For example, the council member from our district is Andrew Lewis, who was elected two years ago. Many feel this is one of the most challenging times in recent Seattle history. And as a result, these two races have attracted a large number of candidates for the August 3rd primary general election. That's when they feel reduced to two candidates in each of the two races who run against each other in the November general election. For the second forum of the year, next Monday evening, July 12th, we will feature the King County Executive and the Seattle School Board position representing our district. And for the third pre-primary forum on July 19th, the focus will be on the mayor's race for the city of Seattle, another important race that has attracted unusually large number of candidates. Co-sponsors of this series of election forums are our resident council here at Horizon House and the First Hill Unit of the Seattle King County Legal Women Voters. I want to thank the League for joining us this year and acknowledge Bernice Castner, the new leader of Seattle's First Hill Unit. Before turning over the program to our moderator for the evening, let me offer a few words about the position of Seattle City Council member. What should council members be expected to do if elected? In other words, what is the role and responsibilities of a member of the city council? Well, Seattle City Charter describes the role of the council as the legislative body for the city. It has a sole responsibility of approving the city's budget and develops laws and policies intended to promote the health and safety of Seattle's residents. Among many specific functions of the councils are establishing long and short-term objectives and priorities, overseeing the performance of city employees and the effectiveness of their programs, regulating land use through zoning laws, and regulating public health and safety. And the city council is responsible for approving the city's annual budget, which this year is $6.5 billion. So the city council is obviously a big job with significant responsibilities. With that as background, let me introduce the moderator of the program, Bobby Speth. Bobby?
Thank you, Neil. I think I have the right total that we have 11 candidates for these two positions. We begin this evening with two-minute-long opening statements. First will be the candidates for position number eight, and then from the candidates for position number nine. The response order has been randomly selected. The forum's second section will be questions from Horizon House and Legal Women Voters members. Each candidate in random order will have a minute to respond. And finally, candidates will be called upon in random order by position for one-minute closing statements. Position nine going first at the end and position eight next. We thank you in advance for making sure that you all have an equal chance to be heard by adhering to our timers, Adele Reynolds and her team. An on-screen warning sign will be alerting you that you have 15 seconds remaining. And if necessary, they'll get a final sign to you that says, "Finish, please." As this is a forum and not a debate, there will be no rebuttals, but candidates can include rebuttal remarks in their closing statements. So now to begin the opening two-minute-long statements responding to our first question. Please tell us why you are a candidate for the Seattle City Council, what your goals and ambitions as a council member will be, and how you plan to accomplish these goals. And the first response will be from Jordan Elizabeth Fisher.
Thank you. So I originally got involved and wanted to run for office because I feel like our political system is lacking a few few very important aspects that, including technology, including transparency, being able to effectively communicate with the needs of the public. I also think that, you know, Seattle specifically, we live in this city surrounded by technological genius, right? And we're not utilizing it. We're not utilizing machine learning or blockchain technology that would effectively audit the effectiveness of our dollars, of our tax dollars. We're not, we're not making use of this technology in terms of finding the best way to, you know, give back or invest in our communities in, you know, auditing the nonprofit sector as well. And, you know, given, given last year, I realized that it is definitely our systems that need to change or need to be challenged. And, 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 you know, I'm here to represent the millennial voice in both global warming, climate change, and equity, and making sure that everyone feels safe and, you know, loves their community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next to speak will be Teresa Mosqueta.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be back with you at Horizon House. The first time I had the chance to join you in person was in 2016 when I was working on the minimum wage and sick leave initiative, Initiative 1433. And you hosted a very robust discussion then. I always appreciate the civic engagement that Horizon House hosts and appreciate the opportunity to do it virtually this year, though I do look forward to seeing you again in person one day soon. I had the chance to speak with you four years ago about my candidacy then, and I told you that I came from the labor movement, working at the Washington State Labor Council AFL-CIO. I've worked on issues around wages and leave, workers' compensation, retirement security, and making sure that more folks have access to good living wage jobs. And I was going to bring that into city council unapologetically because we know that what's good for workers, when we have good living wage jobs, it's good for our local economy. We want to create more opportunities for folks to have economic stability and housing. It creates greater stability for businesses as well, and that's all proven true. I've been really proud to have led the effort to make sure that more small businesses have direct assistance through our budget process with the council president. This year was, we passed the Seattle Rescue Plan. I was proud to have led the effort last year on the progressive taxation to finally help turn our upside-down tax system right-side up and invest in things like housing to address the biggest crisis facing Seattle, and also investments in economic revitalization and Green New Deal dollars. That's $214 million a year. That is going to help make sure that Seattle recovers in a more equitable way. My time on council has been spent also making sure that our most vulnerable have access to protections that they need. The first labor rights bill that I passed was getting rid of the sub-minimum wage for workers with disabilities and making sure that we could actually have more folks have access to good protections and hotel jobs and domestic work. With your support, I'll continue to go in to make sure that small businesses and our most vulnerable have the additional support they need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Paul Felipe Gloomas. Is he muted?
Hi, I'm here.
Good.
My name is Paul Felipe Gloomas. I've been living in Seattle 41 years. I was born in Mexico and I was raised in the African-American community in Washington, DC. I'm running because I see Seattle being destroyed. I see Seattle becoming a slum of gangs and violence and crime and homelessness and drug addiction. And the trajectory looks like it's inevitable unless there's a fundamental change. And that's why I'm running. I'm running for that fundamental change. The law enforcement has to be reestablished, has to be funded. The homeless cannot be allowed to remain on the streets as they are. We need to construct massively transitional emergency shelters, and they need to be transitioned into that. They cannot be on the street. You cannot, you have to enforce the drug laws. You cannot have a society where drugs are everywhere and anybody can deal drugs to anyone. You cannot have that kind of society. And if we don't change that, there will be no Seattle. There will be no future. Now, Seattle has tremendous potential scientifically, technologically. It has the potential to become a manufacturing hub for 21st century development for the world. But that's not going to happen if we don't deal with this incredible crisis that's being brought upon us by the current city council and others.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bobby Lindsey Miller.
Hello, and thank you, everyone. So my name is Bobby Lindsey Miller, and I have experienced a lot in the city since I've lived here for four years. So I never anticipated on being homeless, but I found myself in just that position. I was homeless for 22 months in the city, and I quickly learned that there was nothing was going to be available for me, no resources, nothing. I was going to have to do this on my own, which is fine. So I got myself out of homelessness, kept working my job throughout, and learned that the city is really squandering a lot of money. It is going to all the wrong people, and the homelessness crisis and the affordability crisis and anything that can come before crisis is just being used as a means to funnel money to developers and investors and their friends so they can buy up the city and do nothing in the process. So my goal is to go in and to see where all this money is going, eliminate all the misuse, and change how we do things in the city. I think it's important that we have some responsibility, some accountability, and transparency for everyone so that all the citizens, all the residents can see where the money is going. That's what's important to me. Because once we can figure out how, once we can figure out where the money is going, then we know how it should be spent and who it should be given to. Other than that, let's see, I'm a pretty accountable person. I have done all this on my own since moving here, no help from anyone else. And I'm really looking just to clean up this city, and I want it to be beautiful, and I enjoy it, and I want everyone else to enjoy it as well. Thank you.
And the final speaker for position eight, I think, is Kate Martin, sorry. And I hope there's no one I've missed here for position eight. Kate?
Thank you. Yes, my name is Kate Martin, and I am a planning and design consultant as well as an affordable housing provider, and I am challenging Teresa Mosqueta in this position eight race because I sincerely think Seattle needs better government. I am seeing that as our most pressing problems get bigger and bigger, the budgets get consumed, and my heart breaks because we are not solving the problems. I adopted this town 42 years ago and moved here. I raised my family here. I have my business here. And I have worked shoulder to shoulder with fellow volunteers from one end of the city to the other. And I know many of you people in Horizon House because I've worked shoulder to shoulder with you over all of those decades. It's clear that things are actually getting worse, and homelessness, support for the mentally ill and addicted, public safety, affordable housing, they're all declared as crises. But we, the taxpayers, were paying and paying and paying, and those promises from our electates have been broken. Why does the council keep failing, and why do we keep putting up with that failure? And I'm looking at a couple of answers. Number one, democracy is completely under attack in our city. Special interest power just quibbles back and forth between a couple of them on how they're going to run our city. We voted for district-level democracy in 2013. We have not been able to realize that. But I will bring that district-level bottom-up democracy to the council between the mayor and the district so that we are actually just basically getting district-level council members to steward the plans that we put in place the way it was always supposed to be, 3.0 neighborhood planning. So I will bring that forward and many other things that we'll talk about tonight. But I just wanted to say that I'm bringing diversity, intellectual, professional, and political diversity to the table so we can actually solve problems.
Thank you. And now the candidates for position number nine. Opening statements, again, two minutes, same question. Please tell us why you're a candidate for the Seattle City Council and what your goals and ambitions as a council member will be and how you plan to accomplish them. Corey Eichner, you are the first.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much. My name is Corey Eichner, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, position nine. A little bit about me, I've lived throughout our city over the last 18 years, both as a renter and now as a homeowner. As many of you probably have noticed, I am a new face to Seattle politics, and that is because I am not a politician. I'm an educator. For the last 18 years, I've gone to work every day, serving our students and teachers, serving our students and families as a teacher and assistant principal in our public schools. I've had the privilege of working with our community across the region, from Shoreline to South King County, where I have fought for funding and reform in our education system to ensure that our students and families, furthest from educational justice, have the access and opportunities they need to succeed. I'm really proud to be doing this work right here today at home in Seattle Public Schools. I recently finished my doctoral program in law and policy, and I don't need to tell you that we are a critical moment in our city. Inequities and serious challenges continue to exist, and we need to prioritize our focus. Among the most important is that we need to act with immediacy and prioritize regional funding that will provide rapid rehousing and coordinated supports to our neighbors without homes so that we can move them through a path of success and not make the growing number of temporary housing structures permanent fixtures in our neighborhoods, parks, and streets. Secondly, we have to address the affordability of Seattle and be transformative with our infrastructure that promotes a green city by growing our mass transit and developing our city with intentional and targeted density planning along our current and future mass transit to provide access points to affordable housing, new jobs, parks, schools, and public resources. These are just some of the challenges that they face, and we face, and are certainly not new. As a leader, I am going to go to city council where I will prioritize outreach and collaboration and get us back to the basics of equitable and progressive policy that solves problems in a practical get-things-done kind of way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ian Gunther.
Hello, Horizon House. Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much. I want to start by addressing something that's been mentioned a few times already, and that is whether democracy, whether you want to say it, under attack or whatever my experience is. And I so appreciate this forum that we have too many folks in this city who don't think new voices are important. So we have forums where folks are left out, and I really appreciate that Horizon House is really sticking to, you know, the true belief around democracy, that every voice should be heard. So my name's Xing Gunther. My background is in policy around public transportation, urban planning, arts and entertainment industry stuff, as well as business development, particularly around natural foods and culinary arts. And I'm running because, you know, I think there's a lot of agreement about what's wrong, but there isn't a lot of agreement or execution to get it right. We live in a city that's going through its most profound boom, pandemic notwithstanding, in its history. And if we don't tackle these problems now, we will be like, I grew up mostly in New York City before I moved here a long time ago, and I don't want to live in New York City or San Francisco where it's have and have not. But the road we're on right now is not addressing enough. I'm not saying the council isn't doing any good work, but there's not nearly enough happening to address our affordability crisis. And, and, you know, there are lots of folks who are saying the same things, but it comes across as gibber jabber unless you have plans. I have plans that I'm bringing, specific plans around a public utility district for housing that would really build the amount of housing we need. Instead of 6,000 units over six or seven years, we'd build 6,000 units in a year, and it would be affordable. And we would use public-private partnerships with our industry leaders who have innovated in this city for over a century. They will step up if we give them a plan. That's how business people work. We need their help. We can't shut them out. I want the arts and the culture to have the voice that it used to have in the 90s, and all equity to be that which is heard throughout the city, whether you are black or white or in-between. If you are being left behind, you deserve better equity in one of the literally richest cities in the world. We have to be bolder, and we have to turn away from those who want us to be elected because they have special interests. It's absolutely true. So I bring the ability to think out of the box, new solutions, public safety. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Breonna Thomas.
Good evening, Horizon House, not Horizon House. Breonna Thomas here. Good to be with you again. I think the first time you had me was 2011. I was a baby campaign manager back then. It's been quite the decade. I'm running for Seattle City Council because when I moved here 17 years ago, I was able to find an affordable apartment. I had a couple of jobs to stitch together, and the city was a place where you could chase your dreams. And that's disappearing really quickly for folks like me who want to come to the city, who want to build here. Housing, as we've heard already quite a bit, is completely unaffordable. People, there are the haves and the have-nots. And I think that in the middle of that, we've gotten into the habit of having discord instead of discourse. I'm wanting to bring discourse back to government and back to the city council. A couple of things that are really important to me, criminal justice reform, not just Seattle Police Department. I know they get all the attention, but kit and caboodle from start to finish, we're talking prosecutors and defenders. We're talking judges, addressing cash bail, charging people bail for crimes of poverty just doesn't make any sense. If they had money, they wouldn't be doing crimes of poverty. Building a Seattle that's sustainable for the future, we are seeing environmental refugees come here because we do have beautiful mountains and clean air and clean water. And we should be building a city that defends for climate change and doesn't just respond to it. And last but certainly not least, an equitable recovery from the COVID crisis. We know that small businesses all over the city have taken a real hit in the last year, and the council's done some good work to put supports in place, opening up safe streets, doing sidewalk cafes, all of those things that really got us through as a community. And I'd love to see some of those policies continue and be made permanent. But we also have to do that with an eye toward how we are going to grow as a city, and that includes transportation infrastructure. I'm looking selfishly to run for Seattle City Council because I want to be part of the solution of building a Seattle for tomorrow so that I have the opportunity to age in place with dignity as all of you at Horizon House get to.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikita Oliver.
Well, good evening, Horizon House. I am so excited to share space with y'all and want to pay homage to the late Floyd Jones and Eileen Morris as they were two of my very first donors in 2017 when I ran for mayor. And I'm excited to share space with y'all. I'm now running for city council, citywide position nine. And I'm running because I believe that it's time that our city respond to the crisis in front of us with solutions that are actually commensurate with those crises. I live in the Rainier Beach neighborhood. I am an educator, an executive director, an artist, a lawyer, and a professor at Seattle University School of Law. And in the work that I do with young people in our city, I see firsthand the housing crisis, the lack of access to affordable housing, the impacts of displacement and gentrification, the overwhelming racial wealth gap, the problems in our transportation system. And COVID-19 has exacerbated each of those crises. And I don't simply want us to recover from the COVID-19 crisis. I want us to do the work of building a social and economic safety net that ensures if we ever hit a crisis of this level again, that people have hazard pay, healthcare, working conditions that ensure every family can thrive during a crisis and post a crisis. And how are we going to do that? We need to build green, social, affordable housing. We need progressive taxation. We have relied upon a regressive tax system for so long that we've actually built a brittle economy to fund the very needed social services that keep many of our families in Seattle afloat. We've just moved through a heat wave. And if we're going to ensure that the climate catastrophe actually allows us all to survive for many more years, we need to build housing and transportation and lockstep with each other, build green, and continue to have a thriving economy that has a just transition into green jobs. I am the only candidate in my race endorsed by the MLK Labor Council, Seattle Education Association, UFCW-21, Unite Here Local 8, many other unions, Transit Riders Union, the Sunrise Movement here in Seattle. And I want to be our climate champion, our transportation champion, our housing champion, and build a city that can last for everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Nelson.
Well, hello, everybody. Thank you very much, Elections Committee, for convening this and Legal Women Voters. I know you vote, so this is an important event for me. My parents-in-law were evacuated from Houston during Hurricane Harvey by boat, and they ended up in Ida Culver. So I know how invested you are in the city. All right, I'm running because I think that Seattle has lost its way, and I will bring the pragmatic, experienced leadership that council needs right now. I was a legislative aide to council member Richard Conlin for about 10 years, so I know how local government should work. And my husband and I own Fremont Brewing. We were hit hard by COVID, as everybody was pretty much. But we managed to keep everyone employed and increased everyone's wages to make up for lost tips. But other businesses were not as fortunate, and that's why economic recovery, a long-term equitable economic recovery is my top priority. For me, it's all about jobs, and I don't see council doing enough to help small businesses in the downtown core. And jobs are leaving, so I'll bring the perspective of a small business owner to council. My second priority is basic services, all right? Basic services are local government's main job. And I have seen council not adequately funding basic services for a while and depleting the general fund to pay for other programs, and this ends up increasing our reliance on levies and then increasing property taxes, which is particularly difficult for people on fixed incomes, like my mother-in-law. So that is my second priority. I have a long list of solutions actually on my website, so I encourage you to go there. But, and then finally, my last priority is to restore public trust in local government, which has been damaged by council's inability to adequately or effectively address some big issues that are going on right now, homelessness, public safety, et cetera. So today I got the Seattle Times's endorsement, and I'm also endorsed by the Seattle Building and Construction Trades Council, which represents about 220,000 workers in King County. I was endorsed by the ironworkers and the plumbers and pipe fitters. And you might be thinking, why does labor endorse the business owner? And it's because we're all aligned in wanting a strong economy, good jobs, and a safe and livable city.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Linda McCaffey.
Linda? Yeah, sorry. Hi, I'm Lindsey McCaffey. I am running because I moved here four years ago when I was in love with the city, and my attitude toward the city has gone very downhill. And I am a low-income person. I have a low-income family, and we have been homeless here before, like Bobby Lindsey Miller. We've been through the program. And it is really hard to navigate, and I want to fix it. I want to streamline it. Having been through the system, I understand how daunting it is and how difficult everything is, like from transportation to where you have to go, to who you have to talk to, to where they are. There are so many things that need to be improved in the 211 system. I'm a veteran. I'm a mother. I'm also a small business owner, and I am a caretaker. So one thing I really want to address with the city is our budget and sticking to it and living within our means. I had to learn that lesson, and I think the city needs to learn the lesson as well. It's a very valuable one. When I was in the military, I was a battalion individual medical readiness officer. And in that job, I processed And in that job, I processed over $3 million in workers' compensation claims. But I also got to see how government entities manipulate the budget. And they wait until they get their budget in October when the fiscal year starts. They hold on to as much of that money as possible. They order the bare minimum until the next budget rolls around. And when that happens, they spend it all because the system is a use it or lose it system. And if they don't spend it, they won't get that same funding the next year. I have witnessed this. I understand how it works and I want to put an end to it, at least in our city as much as possible. I would like to get more highways so that we have faster ways to get to the hospitals. Rather than taking surface streets and getting stuck in gridlocked traffic downtown. I have a whole lot more to say. You can look on YouTube for me if you would like.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we move to the second of this program, which will be questions that have been presented. To you from the Horizon House residents and illegal women voters. The first question is, Horizon House and its residents have a stake in the safety and viability of downtown Seattle. What specific measures for the revitalization of downtown? Do you consider to be the most important and how will you promote them as a city council member? The first person to respond will be Sarah Nelson.
Well, thank you. I got the top ranking from Downtown Seattle Association because I do have specific plans. First thing we need to do, I have, so I think that we need to invest in a long-term strategic plan for downtown. And I don't mean spending years and hundreds of thousands of dollars on a consultant. I mean get a plan for business recruitment. There might not be the expertise or the staffing within the city, but we can't just think that downtown will bounce back on its own. We need to court businesses to locate downtown, just like Karen True did for the Alliance for Pioneer Square. We can't take it for granted. So business recruitment and also what I hear all the time is that Seattle needs to address public safety. A lot of companies are leaving town because of crime. And then finally, really moving the needle on homelessness, but we also could, we could fix permitting. That is important for downtown as well as allowing flexibility for ground floor residential, which would add life to our streets.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Kate Martin.
Thank you. So this is an awesome focus for me. My background is planning and design. And I have been studying our own urban environment downtown as well as those throughout the world. For my entire professional career, I even lived in Paris and studied what made their parks, some of them work and some not work. So I have solutions. This is not, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Downtowns are suffering because they don't have a reason to be anymore. And we need a new version of downtown and I will get behind that. A thousand percent. At the same time that we have to enforce the laws that are on the books. And we can't have two sets of laws. We can't have people blocking sidewalks or camping. In the downtown environment or shoplifting all the stores downtown. We need to enforce the laws that we have. But I have a ton of really great ideas for how to do a new version of downtown that's relevant to the future.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bobby Lindsey Miller.
Yes, so as far as the downtown goes, I think it's very important that we address. The crime and the homelessness issue that is going on downtown. I think that will kind of resolve a lot of the issues. So the way I see it is that we need to kind of like divvy it up. It doesn't need to be like a, just a mass of police. It needs to be divided up into sections and we need to have more police that are on feet, police that are on bikes, police that are on horses. Police that are patrolling all areas so that we can make sure that everyone feels safe downtown. I think that before we can recruit any businesses or before we can even begin that plan, we have to address where we are currently. And we have to work with what we have. And what we have is we do have police officers and they are willing to work with us as long as we're willing to work with them. So I think that's the first thing we should do is once we start to clean up and begin to restore stability. Then that's when people will come and they'll feel safe downtown. Thank you.
Yes, the next speaker is Nikita Oliver.
Yeah, so I think it's really significant that our Seattle Rescue Plan takes a comprehensive approach into consideration. By leveraging millions of county, state-level and federal resources. 2 million of which is directed specifically at downtown revitalization. Things that we can do to make downtown a destination space is fast-tracking permits. Commercial rent control to ensure that small businesses can remain in those spaces and have that extend out for a number of years. Provide technical assistance to businesses as they reopen. And really centering our reopening on our most vulnerable workers, like our Unite Here Local 8 workers that are in hospitality. Or ATU 587 workers who drive buses. And providing grants for culture and theater to be able to open up and revitalize that space. But I don't think we can underestimate the importance of housing. We have a public health mandate in front of us. And getting folks into housing is good for small businesses because then people are not sleeping in doorways or sleeping outside. And we are not criminalizing them through prosecution.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lindsay McCaffey.
Hi, so I think the first thing we need to do is address the homelessness and the drugs issue that is downtown. I don't think there's very many people willing to go to that area right now because of how unsafe it is. So we do need a bigger police presence. I think I would really like to push to having the police walking beats. Through the city and getting to know the citizens. I think that would go a long way. Just having the police know who lives here and you knowing who in your neighborhood you can turn to for help. If you need it, I think that's really important. Beyond that, I think we need to embrace the technology. We are a very technological city. We are very advanced in that way and I think we need to embrace that and. Make things more technologically savvy downtown. I guess I will end it there because there's more I could say.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Elizabeth Fisher.
Thank you. Yeah, so you know, there's been this great push and pull between how much law enforcement we need versus. What, at what cost, right? And so there are a few things. We have the addiction crisis. We have the homeless crisis. And of course, we want to invest in beautiful things that in our city, you know, that attract people to come. So with homeless or with addiction specifically, if you look at the court-appointed programs. Affiliated with it, it is primarily religious nonprofits. I think that we should expand that. And provide alternative methods to treat addiction such as plant medicine. The other thing with homelessness, you know, there is plenty of housing already out there. Partnering with entities like Airbnb or VRBO, just the same way the federal government did with Lyft and Uber for the vaccination. Crisis could really help transition people into housing. For the demographic that doesn't have complex needs. Thank you.
Yeah. Next speaker is Brianna Thomas.
As a former First Hill resident, I appreciate what public safety in the downtown core really feels like. I got to walk downtown from Vito's after dinner last night where I had to actually listen to live music and be in downtown. And remember how great it is to be in that part of the city. We've got to reactivate our public spaces partnering with the DSA, Parks and the Mid Program. To bring arts and culture back so people remember that there are so many pockets of downtown that aren't just office buildings. But are actual community spaces, a small business incubator to encourage micro businesses. And a food court style to get businesses back in downtown and get people offline or out of their kitchens and into community where we can all access them. And the other thing that is really important to consider is we are trying to be a world-class city, so where are our street vendors at? Moving people through the city in a way that they feel comfortable, that they feel like they have resources, that we are hustle-bustle again. I think that's a huge part of public safety. People feel safer in groups. And I was also at Pike Place Market just the other day. I assure you that the core is coming back. I know we can't do nothing. But I think that we should be encouraged that folks are excited to get out of their houses and back into our wonderful downtown.
Thank you. Next speaker is Paul Felipe Gumas.
Alright, so things that were said by Kate, Bobby, Lindsay and Sarah. Many of those things that they said, I agree with. The question for me is, we have this work-at-home reality that has taken over in the last year and a half. And many businesses and many white-collar jobs can be done now outside of a central location. And I don't know how that's going to play. And so will people come back in sufficient numbers to their offices? To a centralized place or will they remain in a decentralized condition? So this is a very key aspect and the condition of downtown is going to play a major role in that. And I think that's the key thing. And having these problems that these other candidates described cannot be allowed. That's the whole point. Otherwise, people aren't going to come and there isn't going to be a downtown. It's going to be a dead downtown.
Thank you. Next speaker is Axiom Gunter.
Yeah, so fundamentally, if you want safety, it comes in a prosperous city like Seattle. If you have stuff to do and people living where the stuff gets done because the tourists will fill in the rest. So you know, my public utility district plan for housing will build housing downtown. It will build affordable housing downtown. It will also build supportive housing for the homeless. And help to redirect money more efficiently to homelessness services. And in those buildings, there will be affordable space for food service and for retail space. So that we can bring a new generation in. I know lots of people who would love to open a business, but they just cannot afford to do it. Along those lines, when it comes to real estate, you know, the public utility district won't be the only one building because we'll raise height limits. And we will make sure that it's easier to permit and build housing at market rate for those who can afford market rate. Because it's really critical that we capture the value of that. We can use land value taxes so that we avoid stuff like Civic Center, which has been a pit for almost two decades now. And public safety, you know, it's really important that we actually have precincts downtown with foot patrols, a bylaw officers, community officers. And mental health officers in addition to mental health services. We need arts and festival programming so that people have stuff to do, move bumper shoot downtown and start a mural fest. So the graffitiists of the city can get trained and become disciplined artists with actual marketable skills. There's a lot of opportunity here. It's not that people don't want to live and work downtown. We're just going through a change. And if we don't usher that change properly, we're going to regret it. You do those changes and we will be safer.
Thank you. Next speaker is Teresa Moscato.
Thank you so much. I want to draw off of what Nikita said about the Seattle Rescue Plan. She's absolutely right. And they are absolutely right that we did $2 million directly to downtown. And that is in combination with additional supports that many others have commented on, including needed arts for, needed support for arts and culture, small businesses, residents as well. The mayor's total, you know, math around this is about 15 million when you look at all of the combined investments that will go directly to downtown. And that's because of the Seattle Rescue Plan. That alone is going to be a huge infusion of dollars. But that's in addition to the funding that we've put forward to helping to make sure that more folks are having places activated, community spaces. Community plazas, storefronts and making it easier for those businesses to reopen, which we should actually be doing across our city. Making sure that we have more folks who are currently living in doorways of prosperity, as I've said before. Especially among our largest businesses, getting those folks housed is a huge part of what we have been investing in in the last six to eight months. And making sure that we're also using the jumpstart funds that I led the effort on. And that is $136 million a year going into housing and about 20 million going into economic revitalization, which downtown Seattle has said is really appreciated.
Thank you. The next and last speaker for this question is Corey Eichner.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you so much. Great ideas that we've heard from a lot of people so far. Honestly, we really need to work to improve that access and opportunity to downtown. You know, first and foremost, this includes, as many have talked about, improving the public safety. This can be done through a variety of criminal justice reforms, but I really think we need to have that renewed commitment to community policing. So that when challenges do arise, we've got folks who know the community and can address that appropriately. Secondly, with that is no doubt addressing the homelessness crisis. This is a key cornerstone to my campaign. This has to be a priority, you know, for the city council. Yes, as we look to investing in the businesses downtown, there is money that's allocated in the American Rescue Plan. I support that. However, we have to think also long-term on how we can make this more permanent through small business tax breaks, rent control. And supports to make sure that evictions can't happen. We also have to look to bring more businesses to downtown focusing on services, focusing on engagement, the arts and social interactions. Most importantly, I think we need to ask our community, what do they want downtown? And let's listen to them to put that there so they'll show back up.
Thank you. Now we're on to the second question. Many Seattle residents consider the city council, excuse me. Sorry. Horizon House phones are hard to kill. Many Seattle residents consider the city council as currently constituted to be dysfunctional. Unable to work together to adequately deal with citywide issues. As candidates for a nonpartisan citywide seat, what measures would you propose to make the council more functional and better able to govern? Oops. The first respondent will be from Brianna Thomas.
Got pretty lucky on this one going first. So I think that part of my run for Seattle City Council right now is from being from the inside. And some folks appreciate that and some folks don't and that's fair either way. But I will tell you that there is more cohesion in the council than is reported in the media. There is a lot of work that gets done in the background that's not sexy and doesn't lead. But there are so many votes that we've taken that have been unanimous, that have been in a consensus model, that we do the hard work of governing together in the background. It just doesn't seem to make the news. One of the things that works best is remembering that governing is a team sport. Can't do anything without four other votes if you're a council member. You always got to get to five. And then you've got to be able to work collaboratively with whoever the executive is. I personally am hoping for an executive with a little bit of legislative experience because someone who knows how a bill becomes a law is less likely to veto it. Because they understand how much work has gone into it. But I think recognizing that we are all here to represent the entire city of Seattle. And what is in the city's best interest, including making hard decisions. And sometimes having to say no when community comes up with an idea that we've got a legal memo says, that says we can't go there. We just don't have that opportunity at this time. So I think a lot of courtesy, a ton of conversation and remembering that governing is indeed a team sport.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lindsay McCaffey.
Well, from, I like what Brianna had to say because from what I have noticed from watching the Seattle channel. I have, and listening to the city council meetings, I have not heard a whole lot of discord between them. I hear a whole lot of unanimous votes and cooperation and respect between each other. So I'm, I'm, I'm just not well-versed in this question, I guess, because I don't see where it's coming from. But I am intrigued and I would love to know more about it. I wish I could give a better answer than that.
Thank you. The next response will be from Paul Felipe Gumas.
Yes, okay. I wouldn't say that the city council is fighting each other a lot. They might be. But I would say that they are, they have a problem of group think. Of an echo chamber of political correctness. And they're not looking at what they're doing from the standpoint of the consequences of what they're doing. And the best example of that is the 72 veto of Mayor Durkins of the police defunding bill. And I think that's, I think that's the best example of being out of touch with reality. And I think that's the problem. And I think there's a collective group think that dominates that, you know, is. that, you know, is influenced by radicals. And I think that has to change. And if I come in, I'm going to make everything based on outcomes, not based on ideology or anything else like that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nikita Oliver.
I think that our city has been facing some incredibly challenging issues. And we are at a turning point where we will decide whether or not we're going to put in place the bold progressive solutions that will address the housing crisis, address the affordability crisis, address our public safety issues, or will continue to perpetuate the status quo. And I think the contentions that we're seeing, whether it's in the council or with the mayor, are us as a city really trying to decide who we will be and what the next 100 years of this city, the Emerald City, will look like. I'm an organizer by nature. I'm an educator. And I believe that by educating people on what needs to happen, the solutions and the problems, and bringing those most impacted by situations to the table, we can actually navigate forward and find a solution. In 2012, when we started talking about the new youth jail, organizers like myself were told that what we were saying was crazy. And we are in 2021, and as of 2020, Dow Constantine announced that we will take a new path of juvenile justice, the exact path that I was advocating for in 2012. So I deeply believe in education and organizing and moving towards the Seattle that we want to be and doing that through developing solutions with impacted communities.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bobby Lindsey Miller.
All right, okay. So I think I kind of parse this out a little bit. So when I hear dysfunctional, what I'm thinking, what I'm hearing to me is that it sounds like a bunch of people who are just saying like, yes, no, sure, they're all kinds of like going with the flow. There's no, it doesn't feel engaging. It doesn't feel like these people are actually working on your behalf, which I kind of get. So I think that it's important that, if I was to go in, is that I want to know why everyone is voting the way they're voting. Why do you think your proposal is important from your perspective? Because that's what's important. When people are creating policy, they're creating it in their perspective or from the people who fund them, their perspective. But anyways, another time, I digress. But what it is, that they need to figure out, like, who are you working for? Who is this going to work for? And then have a discussion. Everyone needs to sit and figure out what it is, like where they're coming from and explain to the next person, and then everyone come together to do what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jordan Elizabeth Fisher.
Hi. Yeah, so, you know, I've thought about this a lot. And what I propose is that we get organized and we start bringing together all of Seattle. On the blockchain, it's more secure than our current voting system. The military uses it. It'd be able to generate a pulse of community sentiment and, you know, also provide tools in which the community gets to dictate whether a social worker responds to a mental health crisis or whether a police officer does. I think that, you know, it's absolutely imperative to our democracy that the community dictates how they want to be held accountable and governed and measure, measures of consequences. So, thank you.
You bet. Next speaker is Corey Eichner.
Oh, wonderful. Great question. I think it's a lot of the reasons why you see so many people throwing their name in, you know, to the hat, this go-around. I mean, running for office and activism is very different than legislating, and we need a city governance that, you know, that understands that and worked with that. Democracy isn't about proving that you are right and somebody else is wrong. You know, in fact, democracy is about compromise and working together and putting group think to come to the best possible solution. We have seen an utter breakdown between the executive and the city council. And I also don't think it's healthy when you have a legislative body that, you know, predominantly votes, you know, in a, you know, unanimous fashion. We are breaking down the true compromise and thinking and working together that should be happening in city governance. What we need to fix is we need a fresh voice. We need a fresh perspective. There's going to be a lot of experienced candidates running, and I value them and I value what they've done. But if we really want to move Seattle in a different direction, we need to bring in a different perspective that's not part of the inside, that's not been part of the activism along the way, so we have a fresh approach. So you can step back and ask why.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kate Martin.
Thank you for this question. I do think there is an echo chamber and that a debate is so necessary to solve the problems that we're faced with. I, I don't believe that top-down solutions work. I mean, as a person that houses homeless people and gets them back on track myself, I don't think we're, I think the dysfunctional response to what we're doing is so personally upsetting to me. What I will bring to the council is an assistance to stop doing things that don't work, because we are being bombarded with people with ideological ideas where there is absolutely no evidence anywhere that their ideas work and all evidence every place that these ideas do not work. As a person that will bring a planning perspective that solves problems, because that's what I do professionally, I will assure you that I will not allow this continued perpetuation of failed strategies to continue to be funded. We need scrum, not waterfall, promising prototypes and proven strategies. And that is what I will insist on as a council member.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Nelson.
Well, it's been said, the, there are way too many unanimous votes, and that represents a lack of diversity of thought. It reflects what I see council doing, which is to put the finger in the air and go with what is seen to be political expediency and answering to the loudest voices instead of really taking careful, paying careful attention to the details, the minutia of legislation, incorporating the feedback from the expertise of stakeholders that legislation will impact, and also educating the public and providing time for them to, the public to provide input. And what I see happening too much is that council runs with model legislation that's presented by special interests, and that's, that ends up in unintended consequences. So we, I will all represent a different perspective, and I will answer the phone when you call. I will answer your emails. It's time to get over this ideological posturing and focus on what will work.
Thank you. Teresa Moscada, you're next.
Well, thank you so much. I'm having a hard time with some of the answers here, because the question was about discord and maybe infighting on council. Now, folks are concerned about all of the work that's been taken to try to get to majority votes and in often, in many cases, unanimous votes. Unanimous votes, by the way, on issues where we've been looked at as a national model. These are not pieces of legislation that have come to us from some group. In many cases, I have spent months, if not over a year, working on legislation with diverse folks to try to come up with policies that actually work for a diverse set of stakeholders. This is exactly what I did with the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights that Pramila Jayapal has used, along with Vice President Harris, as their model for Domestic Workers Bill of Rights. That's why Pramila Jayapal has endorsed me, in part, because she knows that I'll work with diverse folks and push for progressive policies. I've been able to pass the hotel worker legislation guaranteeing healthcare to workers so that we can bring more folks downtown and have a strong hotel industry and also make sure that those workers are protected. And that's what we're looked at in terms of jumpstart. I worked with large businesses and labor to pass progressive policies. If anything, I think the echo chamber is sometimes hearing from inside, you know, messages here in Seattle that Seattle is not working when, in fact, across the nation, we're looked at as a model on so many progressive policies, but the issues are far bigger than we've had the chance to deal with yet.
The last speaker is Axian Gunther. You're muted.
Yes, I didn't get into this race because I saw massive discord on city council, although certainly there is a chasm between, I think, the council and the mayor. Rather, I agree that I think the city council has done some really trailblazing stuff. My frustration is that we have some really serious problems right in front of us that are not being addressed in a trailblazing way. And having lived and worked all over the country, in Canada and in Europe, I actually have seen and lived in and experienced different approaches that I honestly think there is an ignorance factor that when you do have new voices, when you do see people who are not coming up through special interests, through union endorsements and all of that, that you can have a wider discussion. That's my issue. I don't think that, you know, I watch council meetings, and I think the bigger issue is, how come you can ask a question of council, not unique to Seattle, but how come you can ask a question to the council, but you can never get an answer? We should make that part of our policy. We should make sure that we have quarterly weekend meetings on council so people can participate. We should make sure that we have after-hours meetings, so that, I know it might suck to be on the council to have to deal with that, but people in the city don't have enough information and they're not getting enough feedback. We don't get a newsletter in the mail, for example.
Thank you. Well, this will be our last question, and we hopefully will do it briskly. What is your preferred plan to reduce homelessness? Please outline the main elements. First speaker, Paul Felipe Gumas.
The biggest problem, as I see it, is the permissiveness on drug use. That whatever plans that are being used, there tends to be a low barrier to drug use. And whereas if the laws were enforced, and if you had emergency transitional shelters, then you could create a situation where the homeless could go to those shelters and get treatment. But it can't be a permissive, low-barrier treatment. Now, a lot of people say, "Well, they need the drugs." No. You have to, that's the most important thing, I think, is the permissiveness on drugs is, in dealing with the homeless. If you permit it and you allow it, you're never going to get, you're never going to deal with it. Period. There's no way. And that's, and that's the key. And that is exactly what's happened with the prosecutors, King County and Seattle Prosecution, and the city council. This is where they have completely dropped the ball.
Next speaker is Nikita Oliver.
Thank you for this question. So I want to acknowledge that the biggest reason for homelessness in our region is a lack of affordable housing and a lack of access to high-wage, unionized jobs. In the short term, we need to have radical accessibility, parking lot programs, tiny house villages, and hotel-based models that provide supportive services for community members. In the midterm, we need to change our zoning laws and exclusionary zoning, have infill models for having more housing, expand the types of multifamily housing options we have, and build deeply affordable, green, social housing. And in the long term, we need co-ops and community land trust, because home ownership is a key part of being able to build wealth and be able to address the racial wealth gap in our region and ensure that all families have access to home equity and the long-term options of education, health, and stability that only a few families in our city right now have access to. So we need a short-term, midterm, long-term solution that prioritizes getting people housed.
Thank you. Next, Bobby Lindsey Miller.
Sorry, my screen keeps jumping around. Okay, so my number one plan is immediate housing. It's not so much that we don't have housing available in the city, because I remember when I was sleeping in my car and working two jobs, I would sleep in front of brand-new, sparkling buildings that were completely empty. So we have plenty of housing. There's no one there. And I think that we need to start making deals with the people who own those places or the developers are even trying to build these massive, huge structures, that we should tell them that, "Well, here's what you're going to have to do. We need this many units. We're going to pay you this much, and we're going to put homeless people there because we need to give them stable housing. And we're not going to wait years and years and years and spend a bunch of money on contractors to do that. We're going to do that right now. If you want to build in this city, if you want to make money off of us, then you're going to have to give something back to the people." And that's something that a lot of people aren't willing to do, that are willing to go toe-to-toe with these developers, these investors, but I am, because they're not donating to my campaign. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jordan Elizabeth Fisher.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have worked with the homeless community for many years. I've been an executive director of a nonprofit myself, and I will tell you a few things that I see. I see nonprofits being too diverse and not meeting the needs of the large demographics at hand. I see affordable housing as a big one. I see utilizing real estate investment trusts on the blockchain in which people get to dictate the terms of their housing, their fair rental prices would be a big step. And then I also definitely agree that, you know, there are some more complex cases that do need to be dealt with that are a result of our lack of healthcare and lack of mental health access. So, you know, by prioritizing and housing the demographic that do not have complex situations in, you know, how, empty housing units that the city spends $600,000 just to maintain would be a great first step. And then prioritizing resources on the most vulnerable and complex cases would, I think, put a big dent in our current problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lindsay McCaffrey.
So, my idea is to have more than one, several hotels. And it's been said a lot, and I think they've done it down in Renton. The one in Renton, I believe, was not successful. But I think we need to have hotels where we can triage and have services on-site. When I was homeless here, I had a family, I had dogs, and we were getting separated in order to get temporary housing. And we could not, my boyfriend and our dogs could not even come visit me when I got my apartment at Mary's place. But then I ended up, we ended up finding housing, so it didn't become an issue. But we need something where people can stay together if they are in a group. Also, running around figuring out where you need to go, having all those places in one location or having access to a bus like, like our elderly do would be really helpful. Just being able to know where to go and be able to take a shower, wash your clothes, have food, get mental healthcare, get drug treatment if you need it, all in one place. I think that was, is really important, and that's a good triage place. And then once we figure out what people need, get them sent over to transitional housing and from...
We apparently have lost our timer. I have a stopwatch here. And so we may be going a little over and under, but I'm going to try to do my best to be fair on everybody. The next speaker will be Corey Eichner. Running my stopwatch.
Right, and I just started mine as well. Yeah, this is, this is, this is great. And I think what the key here is, it has to be a priority. Again, I'm going to say legislating is different than campaigning. And everyone's going to talk about the same things. Yes, we need greater access to rapid rehousing. But what you notice here is no one's talking about how we're going to pay for it. There has to be money that goes to this. And for me, this is my number one priority. Governing is, where are your priorities? And so, let's take a step back. The American Rescue Plan, the $130 million that came to Seattle, while I get the distributive approach the council and mayor's office took, $49 million was earmarked for homelessness. If this is our priority, that number should be much higher. Why not 100? When we look at the budgeting process, we have to say where our priorities are at. This is a crisis. We have to be willing to say that we're going to do this over something else. As we sit here and talk in our campaign mode, we're going to say that we're going to do it all, but legislating comes down to the priorities. So if we want to solve the homelessness, if we want to move in the right direction, yes, long-term is greater affordability and high-paying jobs. But if we want that short-term solution, you need legislators to say, "This is my priority, and this is what I will do with my vote when it comes to budget."
Thank you. Next speaker, Kate Martin.
Thank you. So, the government should focus on mental health infrastructure and substance use disorder infrastructure. When we put the asylum out on the streets, we had 7,000 residential psych spots. We doubled our population in our state. We have 14,000 beds short. They should focus on that. But the rest of us should focus on absorbing everybody into our own homes, especially people my age that have a room or two. I'm just speaking for what I'm doing, and I'm saying I am able to provide three housing units for homeless people transitioning out of town. three housing units for homeless people transitioning out of tents. And I know we can all do that. Only one out of 75 of us need to do it. I'm doing my part. I think you can do your part. I want us to focus as a city to end it like Gresham, Oregon. They met every single person where they were and got them housed. They're at functional, zero homelessness.
Thank you.
We can do that here in Seattle. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Next speaker is Exian Gunther.
Yes, well, I want to start before we get to homelessness with the fact that there needs to be a public-private partnership to build out a restroom system, citywide quality restrooms, whether you're homeless or you have a little kid who needs to pee or you need to pee. There's no excuse for not having that and I have a plan. We need to do that. And that's kind of first line of defense, you know, when you talk about homelessness. The second line that comes immediately after that is you need to give people a home. So obviously, at first, we don't have that. But it was amazing how quickly we could muster up resources for COVID. We are in a homelessness crisis, as has been declared and re-declared and, you know, whatever politicians' fancy words are that change nothing. If we really are in a crisis, we need to have immediately rehousing people, even if you need to use UNHCR tents with dividers on them in the short term. In the long term, a public utility district is a way to pay for housing. There's no mystery as to why we have the cleanest, greenest energy that's the most affordable in this country. It's because our public utility district doesn't operate for anyone other than us. A public utility district for housing would do the same thing. It would build first and foremost supportive housing for the homeless and then first-time homebuyer and affordable housing. And you start with corporate money and the hundreds of millions we get every year for, every couple of years for housing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Nelson.
Sarah? Yep. So what I would say is, well, we just, we have to stop doing what we're doing right now. It's not working. We should be treating homelessness as a public health emergency and respond with compassion and resolve. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I propose looking at other cities where different models look better. The thing that they have in common is individualized case management and a central database that all service providers can interact with and also city departments and agencies so that we know what the particular needs are of individuals. So we know whether or not someone needs to just get back into Plymouth Housing or needs to get an appointment at a neighborhood clinic. Mental health and addiction services are extremely important. I see that as paramount to making a dent in this. And we need to control the pot of money to build capacity for that. Right now, it flows through King County. So, and then finally, well, for an example, there is, okay. Finally, we do need to ensure that our parks and open spaces are clean and accessible for everyone.
Next speaker is Teresa Mosqueta.
That's okay. I will try to be short and time myself. Number one, we need to make sure that we are putting more folks into the housing-first model that couples case management providers with mental health providers and substance abuse counselors so more folks can stay stably housed. Number two, I'd like to continue to push for this warm handoff concept that I have of 24-hour nurse lines for shelters and supportive housing services to end the revolving door at our local hospitals and make sure that people are there for low-acute needs, refills on prescriptions, and wound care. Number three, I want to make sure that we're expanding the Health One team. We now have three vans. I fought for two more last budget cycle and I want two more so that there's one in every fire truck ladder area in our city. And number three, or four, as you saw today, in partnership with King County, we've put funding towards creating more hotels so that people can have appropriate non-congregate shelter housing during pandemic. That's a model that works in the long term and that's why we funded it in the Seattle Rescue Plan. And lastly, this is exactly why it's a priority mine that we put funding primarily into jumpstart and that will help.
Thank you. Brianna Thomas.
Okay, so a lot of good ideas so far. Clearly, we want to get people inside. Step one, the homelessness, whether it's a tent, a tiny house, a non-congregate shelter, or safe屋. We've only got one of those sanctioned in the city right now. We need to bring safe屋s back with onsite services so that folks can get their cars repaired, see their case manager, get their prescriptions, take care of their kids. That we all agree on. Midterm, we need to expand our transitional housing programs. When I worked at the Church Council of Greater Seattle, our most successful program was 18 to 24 months. That's how long it takes someone to stabilize from the trauma that is being homeless. And it is indeed a trauma. It's not something that's going to get done overnight. Long-term solution, we all agree, we need more affordable housing. The other thing that we need to do is prevent homelessness in the first place, whether that's rental assistance, working with small landlords to keep people in their homes right now or preventing folks losing their homes through foreclosures because they can be the tax burden.
Thank you. We are now going to get one-minute-long closing statements. Position nine goes first and the first speaker will be Exian Gunther.
Well, I thank you guys so much for this. I do want to kind of double back on housing and just really kind of underscore the different buckets that people fall into housing from. And that would be mental health, addiction, and the cost of living, the lack of job training for today's world, education and job opportunities. So those are all really big areas of focus. And I'm asking for your vote because I bring new ideas. I bring that voice that is missing from city council that is going to innovate and find systemic changes. It's easy to talk about systemic change, but what are you going to do? What are the actual plans? So I encourage you to check out my website, exiangunther.com, or reach out to me to learn more. And really, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Corey Eichner.
Thank you so much for this time. You know, we really are at a critical point in Seattle and I think that we can just do, you know, so much better. People have asked me throughout this entire campaign how I could possibly be competing against some of the more experienced candidates. And my response is simple. We sometimes just need that new leadership and a new perspective to help refocus our work. I have spent my career out of the spotlight. I've not been part of the system now. I haven't been a part of it before. I've not been on the front page of the newspaper. I don't have a list of endorsements to give you. It's because I have been working quietly behind the spotlight, bringing people together, often with very divergent views, to improve the lives of our children. This is the work that I do in education. We have to work together to get things done. And that's what I'm going to bring to city council. That's the new perspective. That's the new approach that I think we need. I ask for your vote and I ask you to visit us at coreyechiner.com for more information. Thank you again for this.
Next speaker is Sarah Nelson.
Thank you very much again for this event. So we all, I call Seattle 50 Shades of Blue. I think that we all fall within the realm of good intentions and we all, I think, lead with the values shared by the vast majority of Seattleites. The question is, who's the best person to get it done? Well, we've been through a really hard year and I've been here since 1990. I have two kids and a husband. So I believe that we're at a turning point in Seattle and we've got the opportunity for a major reset in this town. And it starts with electing candidates who will just be held accountable for delivering measurable results. I ask for your support and I've put my contact information in the chat box because I want to hear from you what you're concerned about and what ideas that you have. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. And Brianna Thomas, you're next.
I'm Brianna Thomas and I have been for the last 11 years, serving as a public servant on campaigns, with the council, in the streets with community. I am built for this job and all the places that I was lacking the last time I ran, I've boned up on in the last six years, working directly with the council day in and day out. I am not running to win this campaign. I am running to govern. That's what we're doing here. This is a pretty serious job application. It is a nine-month-long job application and I am ready for this job to serve the entire city of Seattle. And I thank you for having us all tonight.
Fine. Nikita Oliver, you're next.
First of all, thank you so much for spending your evening listening to us rattle off policies at you. I'm running for Seattle City Council because I work with young people and families living on the front lines of the crisis we're experiencing. I went to law school because I wanted to bring cheap, affordable, pro bono legal services to our communities. I'm currently, right now, still sitting in my classroom where I work because I'm also a full-time worker and renter in our city. And running a citywide campaign while working is challenging. But I'm willing to do that because I do believe I have both the technical skills as a lawyer and the personal, interpersonal skills as a community organizer and educator to bring the much-needed change to our city, to build the Emerald City that we want to live in for the next 100 years. And that's the vision I'm bringing to this table. An affordable city where everyone can age in place and everyone has the opportunity to thrive. We have many policies, exclusionary zoning, the racial wealth gap, problems in public safety that we need to address. And I believe that I'm the person to be able to bring that to the city council in a practical but also transformative way.
Thank you. Now, last in position nine, Lindsay McCaffey.
Hi, yeah. Thank you again for having me here. I really appreciate being here and being able to speak with all these other amazing people. I don't really know what to close on other than, you know, if you would like to look me up, I'm on YouTube, Lindsay McCaffey for Seattle City Council 2021. I am really excited for this opportunity and I really hope that you consider me. Thank you.
Thank you. Position eight candidates. First, Kate Martin.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm taking the long view here. I've been paying attention for 30 years and I see some directions we can make some change. But what you'd be voting for me, two things. One, as a legislator, I'm always going to say, what problem are we trying to solve? What are the menu of solutions? What are the cost-benefit analysis look like? Because I'm a planner. You can also count on me to delete anything that is a failed solution because I'm a debater. You're going to be electing me because I'm bringing intellectual diversity and solutions. I'm a policy sponge, basically. So you can count on me to bring the solutions that work and to kick down the can to the street when it doesn't work. So again, my name is Kate Martin, electkate martin.com. I want to bring the solutions that work and get rid of the solutions that don't work. And I appreciate your attention this evening.
Next speaker is Bobby Lindsey Miller.
Yes, thank you so much for having me this evening. So I have spent the last 20 years working in customer service, working directly with customers, working directly with the public. All I know is creating solutions out of nowhere. All I know is the customer is always right. And in this city, in this role, and in this position, is the people are always right. It's not about what Twitter says. It's not about what's trending. It's not about what some other place is doing. It's about Seattle. Seattle is a bubble. Seattle operates on its own rules, its own laws, operates its own way. And it's important that you get that from the people in the community. And that is what I'm here for, is to work for you and to do what you need me to do on your behalf. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jordan Elizabeth Fisher.
Thank you. Yeah, so my platform is very, very bipartisan. It appeals to every demographic out there who want to have more power of their tax dollars and how they're being allocated. My, you know, I desperately think an upgrade to our technology is absolutely imperative to the success and continuation of our government. Speaking of government, the federal government is moving to a blockchain system probably by the end of the year, which they've already announced. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I'd like to bring that Seattle, to Seattle in our own specific way. And I'm the only candidate that has come up in a way, with a way to save the city's budget, approximately $1.3 billion. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Teresa Mosqueta.
Thank you again, Barbara, and thank you, Neil, for reaching out initially. I know this took a lot of work to coordinate, so really appreciate your generous time. And I look forward to watching the mayoral forum as well. We do greatly appreciate the work that Horizon House has done over the years to really create civic engagement. And I am hoping from this election and the conversations that you hope to help to host, we're able to emerge from this pandemic with a cohesive strategy to really respond to the crisis that has hurt so many of our most vulnerable, including seniors and our community who needs additional housing and those who are looking for stability in the workforce. I am proud to have the endorsements of U.S. Representative Pramila Jayapal, along with Attorney General Bob Ferguson. Earned the endorsement from every legislative district Democrat, including the King County Democrats and the 36th, the 43rd, and so many that I know we all have worked with over the years. I've had those endorsements because I work hard to make sure that there's alliances between folks that I talk to people I don't agree with on a daily basis and that we find solutions. That's what we need right now for a more equitable Seattle and I hope to earn your support again.
Thank you. Paul Felipe Lumas, it's your last.
All right. My concern is that, except for two people that have been speaking, they don't get it. The crime is exponentially expanding. Our neighborhoods are being destroyed. Small businesses are being destroyed. I have been canvassing personally throughout every neighborhood in Seattle, in all of the districts. And you have no idea, unless you go out there, what it's really like. And I don't think many of you have any idea what they think of you. They do not like you. The city council is considered to be enemy number one of a large portion of the population. What they want to see is somebody who's going to fight for them. And that's what I'm trying to do. That's why I'm running. Okay?
Thank you. And thank you all. I appreciate it. And Neil McReynolds, our co-chair, will now give us some final remarks.
Bobby, thank you for moderating this evening's election forum with our Seattle City Council candidates. Good job in a challenging situation, first forum of the year is always a challenge and also a large number of candidates you had to deal with. Good work. And to the candidates, thank you very much. With only less than a month to go and the primary campaign, we appreciate you taking the time to come to Horizon House. Also, I also wanted to just thank our audience for continuing to submit ideas for questions and the questions themselves. So that's very helpful when you saw the array of questions we asked tonight. We want to do that in the sessions we have over the next few months. So that concludes this evening's program. Don't forget Monday evening's election forum featuring the leading candidates for King County Executive and for our district's position on the Seattle School Board. Good night.